Do you have any questions on the consent agenda?
I don't mind coming up later if you want to, I don't care.
I had a quick question, Julie, thank you. On item five, the corporate courts upgrade, is that, has that long been anticipated?
Item five?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, yeah, we've been working on that for quite awhile, yes.
And then, that is anticipated and their budget?
Yes. That is money, Todd can explain how it goes from one fund to the end.
But they're pretty much paying for it out of their funds, right? I mean, we're not...
Yeah, the clerk's required every year to declare how much excess fund she has from her title bureau. That money is to be turned to the general fund for use in whatever purposes the commissioners need. And you happen to agree that these windows and security efforts are done. So it's balancing.
There were a lot of bugs to work out in the, the actual agreement with the contractor and stuff after, but that's what took so long to get it done. That was all you had?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Let me just double check your problem real quick.
You just ordered one more.
I think I'm good, Julie, and thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Vicki, are you good?
I'm good.
Alright, thank you. Are you good?
Okay, who's next?
Todd? You ready, Todd?
Did you need anything, Dave?
I, a signature, I'll write.
You need a signature?
You gotta do the signature.
Just give it here.
No, my son's got surgery on Monday, so...
Oh, here.
Yeah, just, yeah. My son, surgery, yeah, so... His wife would kill me if I wasn't there.
Well, she should, too. Gage?
Jameson. Yeah, he's over there. Just to get the, we have track one, whatever, so, definitely crazy, hopefully. Hope so, you guys. Poor little guy, poor little guy, more spoiled little guy.
And who's doing that?
Everybody.
I know, the whole family.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, guys.
Alright, thanks. Okay, Todd, you're on.
One of my most pressing issues is I still have on my list of things to do to send out a letter to the office officials regarding budget schedule. I don't know if that's scheduled. We had originally talked about trying to get proposed budgets out in early October. I indicated mid-September we weren't gonna make that deadline.
I, I think we've asked for a meeting, we wanted Lloyd and John Brusell to come in today, but since Janet's not here.
Right, so that's currently another need.
And I think the sheriff, I think definitely one of us should talk to the sheriff, because I don't wanna blow this up, and it's gonna be difficult anyway.
What do we need to talk to the sheriff about?
His ask.
We haven't decided anything on it yet.
So I guess, what, what timeline are you anticipating Andrew wanting to meet at this point? I mean, with those two meetings out, a couple more weeks still?
We know it needs to be soon.
I'm not sure we'd do a proposed budget at all this year.
I'd like to see what we've done in the past as much as possible, because I... That seems weird not to do a proposed budget.
Yeah, 'cause don't we normally do the proposed budget?
Well, I guess it is weird, but...
Is it because the ask is so much greater this year, Todd, that, is that why you're...
Well, we're s- I don't, I, um... I, I don't have a lot of guidance with which to make even the starts of a proposed budget. We haven't really sat and had discussions at all.
On any of?
No.
And so I, I'm, I'm nowhere close to having something ready now. I mean, I can get something in a week or two, but the, the discussion of what will go into that, I don't think has even happened.
I thought we, we had said that we would start, even if we had to do it on different days than Thursdays, because Thursdays are hard to do this type of stuff sometimes. Meetings with you to go over all this, so we can give you some guidance, to help with the proposed, or in the past, you would come up with the proposed, and you'd make the recommendations to us, and we'd agree with it, and then it'd go out, and then if people had issues with the proposed, then they could set up a meeting and come back in.
Yes.
So, what do we need to do, Todd, to make this happen?
Normally, for, normally I would have met with the board throughout the year. Normally, I would have a much better idea of what capital projects you were interested in doing and which ones you aren't. We haven't really discussed any of that this year. I indicated next year, we're in this odd area where we have a lot of cash, because we've been saving over the years.
For capital.
But we are having, we're gonna flip upside down late next year in terms of spending more than we bring in. And so you're entering a deficit spending period, even though you have more cash. Deficit spirit spending is a concerning aspect that needs addressed. Having a lot of cash is, will help that, but then is the cash to alleviate that or is the cash to get some capital projects done? Those are the guidances that normally throughout the year we, we discuss, or at least I have an idea where the board's heading, and I, I don't have that sense right now, because we haven't meant a lot. So I'm not sure what projects to put in versus not. You know, with the COLA, we haven't really discussed the board's desire in terms of, of giving raises to employees. We talked about, does the board want to try and narrow next year's budget versus letting it run full steam and then worrying about everything in 2021? These are questions that I don't have answers to, and so it makes it difficult for me to try and put together something for you that reflects your wishes. I guess that's where I'm at. I can, I can put together what I think, but the plan that I had been operating on, we've altered and I don't know the changes.
I think we need to meet, like we had talked before, maybe on a different day, just take each department, and you bring your suggestions, the printouts, and then we go over them, and then we do it that day.
That day.
We could do that.
I think, wouldn't that make it easier for you to at least then give you some sense of direction?
Yeah, I just need some guidance as to what you do want to put into the... Again, you know, just the general raises, the general capital program, those big items. You know, the IT, I mean, we're waiting on that a week, and that's good that we're getting the information, but then that puts us another week out.
You know, maybe before the meeting with the sheriff then, we should meet on the sheriff's budget, so whoever meets with him has a feel for what the board wants.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, 'cause I've read through the requests. I wasn't here for the meeting with the sheriff, but I definitely think we need to have a discussion on that, and what it means.
I, I think what needs to be, really, is what you said in the beginning, Todd. People are gonna look at that cash, that carryover. And it's not going to be what it truly is, because you're talking about money coming in and money going out. And at the end of next year, it's gonna be kinda lopsided. So we're gonna have to have a cushion to make up for that, to figure out how we're gonna...
And that was, the idea was to use some of that to slow those transitions.
But, we can't use the whole carryover.
Right, 'cause the other aspect is we had set aside money for some capital projects.
Capital improvements, we didn't do it. But there's several things that...
We need to do, and that's how we get in trouble, because back when the economy was bad, instead of continuing the capital improvements, they spent it on wages, and then it just cost us 10 times more. When we do finally get to the capital improvements, we've gotta find a balance.
Because what happens, I think, when you plan and we do some of those capital improvements, we're gonna spend money now, but it's gonna save us money in the future.
That's the idea if you don't want it.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what, what is the board's pleasure in terms of proceeding?
I think we need to schedule some days with you, that we meet with you to go over the different budget requests. So...
The eighth is Tuesday.
Oh, you know what, that's the senior celebration. Well, that doesn't start till 10, it's a...
How about Wednesday?
When is IT coming, is that?
They're coming in the 10th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to have that discussion and the sheriff's discussion first?
You know, what does your two do this?
'Cause those, those kinda set the balance, and everybody else says.
So do we wanna meet on the night then, on Wednesday the night then? In the morning, Todd, to discuss IT and the sheriff?
No, he's, IT's coming on Thursday. Oh, before IT comes in? Well, I think we need to ask some questions to IT to help us decide, yeah, whether we wanna go the full...
What's that, Thursday, that's the 10th?
We could meet on the night regarding the sheriff.
Yeah, and that's a whole day of its own.
Is that with the sheriff?
No.
No, just us to discuss it with you and other budget concerns that you have or requests or asks that you have received.
And I need some numbers to go with that request and everything, so we can...
Review it.
Yeah, it's not, that request was not complete. I mean, it was not the sheriff's budget request, it was some of it. So I, I know, for me, I would need to understand what is our history with funding the sheriff, and also the perspective of what our revenue picture is.
Kathleen, I think that last meeting with him was a complete budget request, wasn't it?
It didn't include his administrative, it, it was only his officers.
Road patrol, or...
Salaries.
Still, there's more?
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, there definitely is other aspects to his budget. Whether he's requesting increases or not, as substantial in those areas, I don't know.
And, and Todd, do we know what the unions, his union contracts?
We have that, it was either two percent, it was either two or two and a quarter.
I think it's two and a quarter, it was two and a quarter, two and a half, two and a half, or something, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And, yeah, the first year was two and a quarter, but then it went up the second and third.
So, would we have his full request if we looked at what it was submitted for the tax budget? Is that typically what you look at?
Uh, his, his tax budget request was not indicative of what he is interested in having for 2020.
Well, how do we get that?
Um, I can email Ron, I know Pete had mentioned coming in December.
Oh, no, that's too late, isn't it?
Absolutely.
I think so, yeah, he, I mean, he mentioned that in the meeting.
Well, I assume they would want a opportunity after we...
Right, but it has to be before December, though, Kathleen.
No, I know, I agree, but...
Well, do we, what, um... What do you wanna discuss Wednesday without him versus what do you want to discuss with him? Or would you want him to come and present everything first?
I didn't realize we didn't have this complete request.
We don't.
So what are we lacking from his request? How do you come in for a budget meeting and not have your complete request, though?
Well, I mean, even the requests he made didn't have dollar figures, it just had...
Numbers.
And that's what, and that's what...
So in that regard, even that wasn't a budget request per se. Some of it, to be fair, like, for example, the food contract and stuff, we don't know what that number's gonna be, although in that regard, we keep telling them that's gonna be what it is.
Right.
You know, we're recovering the amount that it is. There are some cat expenses that were in the 911 fund that I believe need to come in. I, I'm not sure he's addressed those yet. So there are some small things that maybe need to come forward. Do you want him here to do that? Do you want me to try and get something from Ron for you to look over? That may be the easiest way.
You know, I think the elephant, Todd, is the personnel.
The, I mean, that is always his big one, yeah.
But it's bigger this year than ever, though.
Yeah.
I mean, we've never had a number like this.
Right, so...
Does he typically submit something that's more complete? Okay.
So on the night, I can lay out for you, based on, you know, current expenditure salaries and what those various positions would cost.
Okay.
And I can, I can give you his total budget and give you what we've estimated. For example, we've estimated increases in utilities and food costs and those. I mean, I can give you what we've estimated in understanding that it's our estimate.
And I think when you kinda go through it line by line.
So we can do that on Wednesday, if you would like.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll work with Ron to see if he does have anything more detailed that he can give me. Obviously, he has to work with the sheriff to see what the sheriff wants to submit, but we'll get you what we can. And then the 10th will be IT, to answer some of those questions.
Yes, so what are the questions that we have with IT?
Well, you were presented, the, the big questions there is the replacement of the Windows 7 computers. You were presented with two options. I'm not sure we have all the questions answered, we need to be able to decide.
Between those two?
If we do, if we patch it now and do it later?
Right, what, you know, the, the idea that we leave ourselves at risk, that's kind of a big term, I think.
Right, we wanna know exactly what does that mean.
You can decide.
What's the difference between, 'cause Todd brought up yesterday that our virus software is still protecting Windows 7.
Yeah, for that, we don't know when that will end. Does that mitigate some of that?
Well, Lloyd did talk about that when they presented.
Right.
Right.
The question is, how much, how much does the virus and Windows 10 do versus the virus and Windows 7? What, what other risks do we leave ourselves open to?
I think some of that is unknown.
Well, you'll never know, there's never any foolproof antivirus, I mean...
I mean, he gave us dates that there were guaranteed, I thought that he, I mean, they did, they provided dozens of pages of material, and I, I thought that they did give that information.
Okay.
But if you guys feel they need to come back for more information...
Well, I was leaning toward not patching it, just hiding, doing it now. But, you know, if we can get away with less expensive, I mean, I don't know.
So do we want IT or not?
Well, you know, let, I'll look over my stuff again, 'cause I do, I do know they provided a lot of them.
Yeah, I would like to talk about IT, I wasn't there, so I'll make sure I double review that, and then if I make questions.
'Cause that's a big question, that's a big dollar.
Yeah, that's huge.
That the board needs to decide on.
What other questions did you have yesterday, Todd, that we talked about, is the...
Well, you know, in general, the capital programs, what, what projects does the board wanna see done over, you know, even the next three or four years? Because that's what this cash balance was meant for, it doesn't all have to be spent next year. But that way, we know how much of this balance really is free-floating versus how much of it is committed but just delayed, you know, as those things come up. It'd be nice to get the board's priorities set aside first.
What would be a safe figure to say this is for capital improvements, and I don't...
You know, we used to, we used to focus on a million a year. And we had done it last year, we didn't do any of the capital programs, partly because the board of elections was the million dollars, and it ended up getting, you know, through multiple gyrations, just didn't happen at all that year, and then we're scaling much back as to what we were doing.
So maybe two million this year?
So that would be, yeah, two million for 2020, to make up for that. Again, we have, we have a long, long list, it's just a matter of the board wants to address. We also have a few issues.
Do I have a list?
Uh, I can get you some of the items that we have, you know. You know, we also have... The motor pool building and the RPC building that are kinda lingering right now, that we dealt with, and again, some of the dealt with is, if we really wanna sell it, we may need to put some money in to make them worth selling, or are we not? You know, those kinda things, so, anyway, we can get that worked out.
But Todd, okay.
I mean, the big ones are the capital and the staff, that's, that's the majority of all your expenses of existing.
And that's a permanent expense, it's not a long time.
Yeah, yeah, and then the capital. So we can discuss those on Sunday.
And Todd, in November, we will have been one year into the enterprise agreement. Are we gonna be able to have some idea of the savings or anything?
Uh, yeah, there've been fairly nice savings along the way.
Okay.
And I, we can get you that all worked up. The one question that we do have going forward, and it relates to the capital program, we were going to start phasing in the lease programs and phasing out our older vehicles fairly quickly. Enterprise had a proposal, and I think phased them out in three years. That way, we're on the new vehicles, new lease vehicles maintenance would be reduced. We have since began giving the departments a little more discretion in terms of whether they really wanna turn the vehicle in and/or purchase instead of leasing. And so that kind of confuses the waters as to how are we going to plan vehicle replacements? Do we need to ask the departments if they wanna do it, are we doing it? That would be something that needs discussing with the capital program.
Well, I think some departments can do that, because they're going to keep the vehicle a long time. And I think that's a big thing, with the sheriff's offices, obviously, there's always a rotating...
Yeah.
Right.
I think if anything, that's where we're gonna see the savings.
Yeah.
Well, even with those... We can, we'll deal with it, yeah.
Okay, so what time are we meeting on next Wednesday, so I can put in my equipment?
One, eight, and nine?
Yeah, that's right, we need... Amy, can you send us out and invite? Do you wanna block, like, nine to 11, or how long do you think you need?
Yeah, I think that'd be good. And then maybe spend an hour on our capital.
Yeah.
Do the sheriff, nine to 11, and then maybe from 11 to 12, capital improvements.
Can you go from there? Okay, thank you.
Lance, I have a question, Todd.
Sure.
So, we've changed slightly our process, working with Janet Esposito's office and reviewing materials, and this week is the first week of the slight tweak. So, this is here for us to review. Typically, Todd reviews, and we, um... We are gonna get to do it as part of our consent agenda now, and... Remember, Roy came in and gave us the new timeline. So everything is happening on Thursday, and this is it. And I was hoping, Todd, that you could just give us a brief talk-through of what materials are.
Uh, yeah. Basically, you have four...
It's the beginning of our agenda, the consent agenda.
Yeah, those, we call them the bill runs, you have journal entries. So, uh, this, this report here is actually in three pieces. And this is what the main resolution, the run resolution is. The three pieces, the first piece organizes by vendor name. So, for example, you would ask your own FCO, when's the payment going out? Or if you get a call, you know, we want the check, you can quickly look and see whether that check is in here or not. If you don't see it, of course, you could ask, you know, is that check coming next time? The next section, and it's the one that I generally will get to most, is done by fund. And so you can see, the general fund this week is spending $42,000, which is very low. Usually, it's closer to around $100,000. Some things that stick out in here, right now, there's no expenditures on the jail, although there have been some fairly substantial payments here over the last couple months for that. And so that lets you look by fund as to who's spending the money and where's it going now, which sometimes raises questions. The more you look at it, the more you start to see, well, that's a normal number, that's a normal number, then all of a sudden, like, wait a minute, what happened there? And then you ask a quick question, why is this one so big this time? And then the third part of the report are the individual invoices of where they're going to, which isn't... It's more difficult, you have to kinda know what you're looking at.
Are you doing this, and then we're doing it also?
So now this will be coming to you guys then, to, for you to review.
So you're not doing it anymore?
No. I'll, I'll still be looking at it, yeah, I mean, I'll still be looking at it, but the approval...
So we're just adding an extra step for us to do, to pacify the auditor?
Do you...
Because, do you really think we're gonna look at that, everything, or like, I mean...
Well, apparently, we're doing that as...
Yes, but that's why we have, we pay Todd, the budget, he basically gives us the okay. She now wants us to look at it as well.
I also wanted more oversight as to what we are passing in our consent agenda. So I think it's good stewardship for us to review these materials that we're, that we're passing in resolutions each week. So it just helps give us more accountability.
So, that's your bill run resolution.
Right.
You also have what's called the journal entries, these aren't your journal entries, these are the financial journal entries, and each of those is in here designating where money's moved. Journal entries are basically county fund to county fund, kind of thing. These, these would be checks actually going outside the county. These are movement of funds within the county, and you can see where they are. And there's a summary highlight here, kind of indicating the dollar amounts, which then if you see one, you can go back and see where that money went, or gas charges.
That's the third resolution, right?
That's, uh, journal vouchers, yeah. And then, for example, this week, we have a dent wire for USDA, and then every other week, we get the health benefits. And so here's our wage works, our claims, and then here's medical equal, $332,000. That's probably the higher one.
Which is on here, yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause you do that every month, though, don't you, Todd? I mean, as far as, like...
Every week, you have these, yeah.
The health benefits, and you see that.
Right, that comes like every other week, and, yeah, yeah. So now, I think the idea...
And part of it was the timeline, didn't it?
Julie, okay.
Match up with our meeting calendar, now it does, so we can have the opportunity to...
Well, who changed the timeline?
Did you have a...
The auditor's office sets the timeline.
The auditor's office changed it.
It, it's on the envelope.
Oh, that's right here, yeah. So the idea now is that you guys would sign off on each different aspect.
This is ridiculous, I'm sorry.
Well, I'd like to know what we're voting on.
Well, that's fine, if you, I mean, that's fine, if you wanna do it, that's fine. I mean, it's just ridiculous. Just more measured than when something goes wrong, then accountability's gonna come back to us again when we paid Todd Bragg, as our budget and finance person, to do the bill runs. And if we have a question, we can always ask Todd, so you two can sign, I'm not signing, I'm playing it simple. It's ridiculous.
Well, I'm happy to have the oversight over an important function of our office that is on our consent agenda every week.
Exactly. But you know what, we have lots of other ones on here that, you know what?
I review all of those very carefully, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to review this part carefully as well.
Okay, good.
Any other questions on that?
No, that was helping us out, Todd.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Is there anything else? Do they even have any questions about the add-on? Kathleen, did you need to ask Todd about that for the non-general fund add-on that we got?
No, but I would like a little bit of time before we pass the consent agenda to review the materials. So I think that will take about 15 minutes. And I don't have any additional questions beyond that.
Okay. Do you wanna recess then?
Yes.
Because there's nothing else.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
So on Wednesday, will the sheriff be here?
No.
Okay, it's just, he'll be going over his.
Yeah, it's just us with.
It's like a work session.
Yeah. Yeah.